We will call the November 3, 2011 Planning Commission hearing to order. Please stand before the legislative committee. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under balance, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please hold on. Commissioner McGeith, here. Commissioner Michael Westen.
President.
Commissioner McGeith, here. Moving on to public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Then we'll move on to item six on the agenda, AP 110003 and AP 110004. Before we were interrupted, we were at step B in the public hearing presentation of evidence, but there have been some changes, so we'll go to staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Just to bring you up to date as to where we are since the actually events that turned out very well at the last hearing. And I would like to point out that I am very proud of David Morissette for her quick actions and fearless nature in the middle of a crisis where the rest of us sit around, including me. Anyway, we had a planning commission hearing on this item on September 29, 2011. After that, and of course, the issue before you was questions that the neighboring property owners had regarding any effects on their easement rights that go across the property of interest in this application. Snap felt that the appellant's did not quite understand the relationship between the easements, the ownership of the property by the applicant, and how the restricted covenant would or would not affect their easements. So, Plan staff met with the appellant's on October 19, 2011, discussed the issues, and we heard from them their concerns. Subsequent to that meeting, staff and county council revised the restricted covenant to not change the content, but to clarify the issues that were of concern to the appellant's. And I'd like to direct your attention, you should have a copy of the revised restricted covenant in front of you, I'd like to direct your attention to Section 6, which is entitled "Exception to the Restrictions on Use of Property in Restricted Area." And this is a newly written section that we believe addresses all the issues that are brought up by the appellant's. And I'll go ahead and read it, read it to the record. Under existing easements, these are exceptions to the restrictions on use of property in restricted area. Under existing easements and land uses as of May 2, 2011, this restrictive covenant shall not affect the ongoing legal uses of the property or restricted area or any easements or other legal rights in the property or restricted area existing as of May 2, 2011, the date the project is tentatively approved by the county decision-maker, including roadways and water production facilities within existing easements, roadways that are not within existing easement, electrical transmission facilities, existing riverbank protection revetment structures, the maintenance and operation of existing agricultural orchards, existing use of vehicles, equipment, and agricultural chemicals necessary to maintain and operate the existing agricultural orchards, removal or alteration of native trees or plants necessary for fuel reduction as mandated and regulated by Ventura County Fire Protection District, and removal of non-native species and sensitive habitat restoration under the direction of a county-qualified biologist. Under Section B, future land use and easement rights not affected by the restricted covenant. It states, "In addition, this restrictive covenant shall not affect," shall not affect only the following specific land uses and easement rights within the restricted area that do not, that do or may exist after May 2, 2011. One, removal or alteration of native trees or plants necessary for fuel reduction as mandated and regulated by the Ventura County Fire Protection District. Two, removal of non-native species and sensitive habitat restoration under the direction of a county-qualified biologist. Three, the granting of additional easement areas in the future by the owner, that is the owner of the property, to widen a pre-existing easement pursuant to a request by a neighboring property owner acting in conformance with the applicable pre-existing CCNRs and in response to a requirement by a public agency. And four, the legal use of a wide easement, including roadways and water production facilities. So, and the remainder of the restrictive covenant was revised for clarity, and that was the purpose of this revision, to make sure all of the issues were addressed. And I would point out that virtually every contingency that either I or county council could determine from existing documentation has been covered in that section, and there really is nothing more left to do. The appellant's easement rights are protected, and what you have to keep in mind, again, they do not own the applicant's property, and they only have easement rights, they have no ownership of that property. So, your options that are before you today is, number one, would be to deny the appeal and approve the parcel map. And of course, the planning director already made his decision, which is on appeal to your commission. And staff continues to recommend that your commission approve the project. And number two, the other option would be to grant the appeal and deny the parcel map. Now, there is a problem with that, in that there's no evidence in the record to support such a denial. And I believe I've given you a copy of the, a page of the State Subdivision Map Act, and I see the chair is...
It's not, it's not up here yet.
I'm wondering whether it will, it will materialize.
Just coming.
Now, this is, this is a section, I did, we just printed it off of California California Codes, and I'll just read directly out of our subdivision map act book. And this is Government Code Section 66474, and it's entitled "The Grounds for Denial of a Tentative or Parcel Map." And it lists the various grounds under which you shall deny a parcel map. And I'll read some of these. That the proposed map is not consistent with the applicable general and specific plans; that B, that the design or improvement of the proposed subdivision is not consistent with the applicable general and specific plans; C, that the site is not physically suitable for the type of development; D, that the site is not physically suitable for the proposed density of development; E, that the design of the subdivision or the proposed improvements are likely to cause substantial environmental damage or substantially and avoidably injure fish or wildlife from their habitat; yep, that the design of the subdivision or type of improvements is likely to cause serious public health problems; or G, I won't read the whole thing, that the design will interfere with access easements acquired by the public, not private, it's just public. So, these are the only grounds for denial of a parcel map in the State Subdivision Map Act. The county of Ventura, in their subdivision ordinance, includes a few other findings, only one of which could conceivably relate to the use of a private easement. And that will be on page seven of 10 of your staff report, and if you could turn to that page, explore the other. If you don't want to, you can just go and say you're not going to.
They're seeing us on TV, so we have.
And so, that, that's finding number 12, and this is out of our subdivision ordinance, that the proposed subdivision would not be detrimental or injurious to property or existing lawful uses of property in the neighborhood. And as stated in here, the, in addition, the recordation of restricted covenant to protect biological resources within an onsite wetland habitat does not remove, release, hinder, impede, or otherwise affect any existing legally recorded access or use easement within the wetland area or anywhere on the subject property. All existing uses identified in the easement and the CCNRs or subject parcels may continue from the date of. So, with the current language that we have in the restrictive covenant, revised restrictive covenant before you, the language in the staff report, and the conditions of approval, we essentially find no basis by which this parcel map should be denied. So, I think the bottom line there is, I think that it's time we recommend that you make a decision.
Well, before we do that, we're going to go through the public hearing process. And we were in the middle of the presentation of the appellant, and they were making their, their points, and it was questioned, to the right point where it's questioned for the appellant, so I would ask the appellant's to come down if they, if they will, to continue. I know that we've received one, the CPNR. Go ahead and state.
Robert McDonough, 6044 Bridger Drive, Ventura, California.
Richard Eric King, 429 East Bridger Drive, Santa Paula, California.
And I think we have some more handouts, too, that we've prepared, so. What we tried to do this time was to codify everything as far as all of our concerns with the, with the SDO-8. And basically, I think they, they involve about three different points. We do appreciate staff's effort, and we did meet with them, and we think that we've made great strides in that area. We're, we're still at a little bit of odds, because I think that both our positions are at different ends of the spectrum as far as the fee interest in the property. We believe we have a fee interest in the property, I think staff still believes we do not. Staff is, staff is likening our easements to a right of way, and, and we believe that they are much more than that. Based on repairing laws, and based on, on various judgments that have been handed down over the years, there's no question but that the repairing user has a fee interest. And so, that's what, that's what this documentation that, that you're about to receive points out, I think. So, and I don't know if we go through that point by point, or if you'd like to read it first and then ask us questions, or whatever. I think it's, it's pretty much everything we, we want to say is written down on the first three pages or so, and the rest of it amounts to three or four pages. And the rest of it amounts to exhibits. So, basically, it's, it's up to you as, as far as time constraints and whatnot are concerned, whether you want to go through it orally first and then, then read it and review it, or if you want to just review it, read it and review it.
Let's get to the public comment. And what's the commission's pleasure? Should we take a five-minute break to look this over and have county council and staff begin to, to go through this, or?
No, Chair, I'd like to discuss these ten, so I can have, or I can review.
Okay.
I think it'd be best. Okay, thank you.
Have that, have that.
Okay, thank you. Leave it up here.
Please, please, back there. Start from there.
Yeah, Madam Chair. You said at eight, you have your first amendment, wait, the third amendment. It doesn't have a violation statement on top. So, I'm assuming... The first amendment, wait, quote, second.
Yes.
Any questions? And is it my understanding then that your position still is regardless of the exceptions to the conservation easement that you still object?
We have some problems even understanding or believing that the restrictive covenant and the CCNRs can coexist in the same piece of property at the same time. They're at odds to one another. So consequently, we have issues with allowing that, really fully allowing that, because repairing rights and whatnot are so much dependent upon intent. If we allow the restrictive covenant to take precedence over the, over the CCNRs, then at some point in time, someone may argue that we've given up our fee, that we have allowed another document to take its place, and therefore, we lose our rights. So, that's mainly our issue. And, and our issue is not that the lots that cannot take place, it's simply that the restrictive covenant, we believe there are other vehicles whereby the applicant can, can make up for that wetland area. And, and we're just, we're just concerned that whatever happens there, if, if you allow the restrictive covenant to coexist with the CCNRs, then I, one, one of two things has to happen. First off, you've got to word the restrictive covenant so that the CCNRs are superior to the restrictive covenant, the repairing rights are superior. But then the CCNRs apply to every parcel form, so consequently, this, the restrictive covenant is not enforceable. So if the restrictive covenant is not enforceable, then why? Why do it? The other thing is that I think that, you know, this conversation we're having here today is going to be lost within a few weeks. Everybody's going to forget we ever had this. But the restrictive covenant lives forever. And, and not necessarily, you know, in the next short period of time, but five years, 10 years, 15 years from now, somebody is, with a different agenda, is going to come along and look at the restrictive covenant, no matter how it's worded, and interpret it as being contrary to our interests, or contrary to our assigns and, and our successors. So, we just don't see how it can exist in conjunction with the CCNRs without at some point in time affecting our rights and, and being interpreted by some other group of people, such that, first off, they will say that if you allowed it to exist, then you gave up your fee, you gave up your rights to, to this, because now there's another document within that area that, that usurps the CCNR's power. And, and we believe the CCNRs are a much more powerful document than staff's giving them credit. We believe they're written in conjunction with the existing repairing law, and they're written in order to ensure that the farming interest and the, and the repairing system there is protected. And, and so, that's, that's our main concern, is that anything now that, that could be construed at a later time to, that our intent was to give up our rights, just, just like the, the cases that we've, we've cited there as far as the yacht club versus the county, the court comes in and tries to determine intent. What does this mean? Did you give up the fee? Did you not? There's a, you know, now there's a tract of land between you and the water. Does that take away your, your rights? So, I, I think that's, that's very much unclear at this point to us, and I, I think that in order to make it clear to us, I think you're going to make the restrictive covenant ineffective anyway. So, other than to cloud our deed at some later time, due to some other interpretation by someone with another agenda than, than farming. That's, that's our main concern, I think.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we're now in presentation of persons in favor of the recovery action. I have one state of cards of David Bunns, who... Please speak. Please state your name and city of residence.
Is this on, please? I mean, the dial.
On your contact?
Mm-hmm.
Is, is this on? Okay.
This one? That shows all the parcels?
Yeah, I think that's it, and then there's, is it, or that one, and then the next one? What's the next? Okay, that one's good right there.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Hello, I'm David Bunns, and I'm one of the co-owners of the property that we're subdividing. I'd like to thank the...
I'm sorry for interrupting. Could you state your residence, please?
Oh, my what?
Your residence, please.
Residence. 15454 South Mountain Road, Santa Paula. Yep. I'd like to thank the county staff for what seems to be an extremely thorough process that we've gone through. In fact, my wife and I have never seen anything quite so thorough. We've been at this for at least three years, and I think they've left no stone unturned as they have found we have a legal right to divide our property, and there are no reasons in terms of the county or, or the county's legal assumptions, I guess, that, that we cannot do that. The CCNR document that we have with our two neighbors also allows for the subdivision of the property, as it does for their parcels. The restrictive covenant seems to be the big issue. We did not ask for this. This is a SEQA-required law. We don't know, we, we don't assume that we have any rights to change that law in this way. It'd have to be something that I guess would be voted on by the people of Ventura County and the state of California. But I want, I would just like to say that this idea of the wetlands here, I think if you, if you have a look at that green stream, that flows across our property from our neighbor's parcels, certainly from parcel B and maybe from parcel C as well. We did not create the wetlands. That's something that comes from the runoff from our neighbor's parcels. So, I find it really a little bit hard to take that they, they find the wetlands to be our problem. Now, we accept the requirement that we need to survey what is the wetlands and to determine issues about the buffer zone or mitigation exchange for that. In our first public hearing, we all, parcel A, parcel B, and parcel C, were concerned about the buffer zone, since we have our farming situation in there. And I would like to say that any, any aspersions on our farming are ludicrous. We, we're talking about the buffer zone, including our orchards. But that the county allows for a, a replacement of the buffer land as a mitigation, and this is in county-wide general policy, plan policy 1.5.2 parentheses four, which defines the wetland setback. And Ms. Morissette sent us a copy of this, and I'd just like to read this. It says, "The requirement of a buffer setback shall not preclude the use of replacement as a mitigation when there's no other feasible alternative to allowing a permitted use, and if the replacement results in no net loss of wetland habitat. Such replacement shall be in kind, i.e. same type and acreage, and provide wetland habitat of comparable biological value. On-site replacement shall be preferred wherever possible. The replacement shall be developed in consultation with California Department of Fish and Game." In our first public hearing, we understood this to be a concern of Mr. McDonough and Mr. King, and it is for us, too. We already have farming operations, water tanks, so forth, irrigation lines, all sorts of stuff, within the sketched buffer zone. But we have contacted our biologist, and he has contacted Fish and Game, and found out that there would be, it would be entirely feasible to exchange the buffer area, some if not all of it, for other land on our property, as offered here. So, I think if we, if the parcel members want to work together on this, we can reduce the buffer zone by quite a bit, if not entirely, in an exchange for other land that we have available. So, the other thing I wanted to say is that that could take care of all of the problems with the buffer. Now, the designation of the stream itself as wetlands, from what I've been able to understand, even if it is not declared a wetlands officially in this way, Fish and Game already assumes it to be so. No one can do anything in that stream anyway. Fish and Game already assumes that to be a wetlands, whether this is a restrictive covenant is put into place or not. So, I, I find it hard to understand why with some effort at exchanging the buffer zone for some other land on our parcel, and the fact that the wetlands exist, whether they're called a wetlands or not, what, what has changed? Now, the, our, our neighbors complained that this will affect their rights under the CCNRs, when one of the first things that the county has responded to is that the CCNRs, as written and recorded, are not affected. And they've even gone as far as to talk about possible future options here. If a governmental agency requires that the easements be widened, okay, well, that's now documented that that would not be affected. You know, I, I also find it very hard to believe that these two gentlemen who own property in Ventura County and are intelligent, working people, would imagine that they are fee owners of our property. I don't see them supplying a check to me every time that we pay our property taxes. They're not listed on our title. The idea that somehow they have a fee ownership in our parcel is not true. And I think that's been rebutted by county council, and that's a whole other issue, I think, that they need to maybe have some legal counsel on. But I think that it seems pretty clear that we're dealing with a, a law here, it's not something that is an option. If it was, we would say, well, if they come and ask David and Ellen, "Do we want the restricted covenant?" No, thank you. But we didn't get that choice. And as far as all of the protections and options that have been outlined to us, I think that we feel entirely protected and are able to, with the minimizing of the buffer zone, I don't see that there's any problem whatsoever. And I don't see that it affects any of their easements or any of our property that isn't already affected by our blue line stream running through it. And that's all I have to say. Can I answer any questions for anyone?
Are there any questions? Am I right?
Madam Chair, this idea of an alternate area to make up for the current buffer zone, has that been talked about in the past? Do you have anything to supplement information, or is there other consideration?
Madam Chair, Commissioner McGee, that is always an option for someone who has a wetland, if they want to restrict some other wetland property, maybe on their property, or even off-site. But none has been identified, alternate, an alternate property as a substitute, and the applicant hasn't proposed it, and, and the subdivision as currently provision meets all standards.
What, what we understand going through the process there is that we have five years to complete the map of the wetlands, determined by a biologist and surveyed, and, and that, during that process, that's where the option to exchange one area of mitigation for another in terms of the, the buffer zone. I'm sure that Ms. Morissette can give you a copy of, of the county's regulate, or option for us on that. But we have not pursued that, because we have five years to do it, and it takes, you know, survey and biologist and so forth to come up with it, plus an agreement. It has to be done under the auspices of Fish and Game. But what we have done is, is talk to our biologist, who has, who has talked to Fish and Game about it, and Jeff Humble of Fish and Game sees no problem with the concept of it. We'd have to go through the details, but what we're, what we would offer would be some of our land that is virgin land, it has no orchards or anything. And as soon as we mention that, they're all over that, you know. What, they get land that's been untouched in exchange for land that already has orchards and farming on it? They love the idea. But the point being, there are ways to minimize the impact of this SEQA law on the property owners. And we feel like with, with the cooperation of parcels B and C, we could do a lot to end up where nothing is affected, any more than it is now.
Are there other questions of those speakers, Commissioner Weston and Mr. Jones? Are there other questions of the speaker, Commissioner Wester? I am making eye contact with Mr. Bakker. Did you have something to say about that last point?
Well, on that last point, you would have to have wetlands to replace wetlands, not just virgin territory of some other type. And no alternate wetlands have been identified. Okay, but that, I believe what we're talking about here is the 100-foot buffer zone requirement. That is what this particular section I'm reading now, correct me if I'm wrong, but in our discussions with Ms. Morissette, it is under the 100-foot buffer zone requirement, the county general plan policy 1.5.2 parentheses four, which talks about the wetland setback. We're not, we're not, we're not trying to exchange wetland for wetland. What it says here is that the buffer may be exchanged, maybe, if it's agreeable. Now, if not, we'll live with what we have, but we, we believe that there are options to minimize the buffer zone.
Would that, would that happen?
Madam Chair? We'll certainly review any proposal that is made by the applicant for something to be equivalent to the buffer that is currently designed.
And it, and it, and it is.
Well, let me interrupt. Do you have any thoughts, Commissioner, right now? You have, there's been a project that's been approved by the planning director, there's a restrictive covenant, it's in place because mitigation measure and SEQA, we won't be able to certify the environmental documents, we'll forward this project unless we have a restrictive covenant in place because that's what was approved by the planning director. That doesn't mean it can't be modified later, but right now is not the time or the place to start modifying.
By an already-approved project. So that's not really before the planning commission at the moment. The question is, should they uphold the prior determination?
Yes, and I understand that. I, I was trying to address some of the neighbors' concern.
Yeah, I understand.
But I understand. It, it, as far as we're concerned, it could be either way.
Right, and that, that is something that they can be explored under, I guess would be a minor modification or something to the map. You could answer that more specifically, but right now, that's what was approved, is a condition to the map.
Thank you for your willingness to, to try to work with your neighbors to address these concerns, and my husband has made a living interpreting the California Environmental Quality Act, so watch it.
Well, can we get his phone number for this?
No, no, it's, it's extremely, it's extremely complicated and thorough and understand, I am hearing a lot of frustration with this three-year process and, and only getting this far. So I'm making a joke, but I'm, I'm hearing your, your frustration and, and empathize.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we can have rebuttal by the appellant now. Do you wish to rebut anything that, that has been said?
No, I think only just.
Oh, we can't, you can, you can decline and?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
I think our only comment would be that, that we're perfectly willing to review any of the applicant's plans if he has an alternate suggestion as far as the mitigation measures are concerned.
Okay, and you did understand that isn't before us, it's, it's this?
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Any other closing comments by staff, county council? Do you want to address this, this packet, some of the questions that?
Excuse me, do you have any specific questions you'd like me to address?
Um, I think the, the major thing was the riparian rights being equivalent to a fee interest in property was, was one point, if you could explain.
Well, I guess the short answer is, it's not. There's a lot of complicated intertwined legal land use issues going on here, but starting at, at the primary level, we're dealing with Mr. Bun and Ms. Burrell, they have, or did I get it backwards? Sorry. They have the, they have a fee interest in the property. And I've reviewed the documents, and I haven't seen anything to indicate that the applicants have any fee ownership interest in the property. They do have some easement interest, and I think everybody's in agreement on that. As far as the restrictive covenant, it's not going to supersede the CCNRs. The CCNRs are a private agreement between the parties to the CCNRs. We're not a party to that. We don't have any powers over, over those, over those property owners. But more importantly, this, what we have now is we have this restrictive covenant, which has gone out of its way to kind of step and push aside, if you will, any easement rights that already exist. And if you notice in the, the new language, it says that the restrictive covenant shall not affect the ongoing legal uses of the property, a restricted area, or any easements or other legal rights in the property. So to the extent, you know, as the county, we're not in a position to adjudicate the riparian rights of two private parties. I, I don't have any idea what kind of riparian rights they have or don't have. That is something that they can, you know, fight amongst themselves on and have that determined if they feel that their riparian rights are being affected. But this restrictive covenant is not, is not going to affect what legal rights they already have, which are independent of this document. So I, I, I don't see, I don't see any, I don't see this restrictive covenant, and I haven't seen any evidence in the record or any laws that have been presented to me and that I've researched that would show that this restrictive covenant would impact any of their rights. And moreover, I think this restrictive covenant has gone a little bit beyond that to acknowledge, you know, what I find to be a little strange in the CCNRs to sort of grant future rights. But I guess that that's what they all agreed to, that's what they all agreed to, to expand easements or whatever. So we acknowledge, and, and say if that happens, which, which could literally change the, the footmark of the easement as it exists in the future, and not prohibit that, those activities that would be legal uses within that easement, as stated in the restrictive covenant. So, you know, as far as that goes, again, as Mr. Bakker pointed out, you know, we have to go to, look to see whether the findings can be made to support their subdivision, and, and all the evidence in the record indicates that, that it's there. So, you know, to find, otherwise, we'd have to find evidence that couldn't support the findings for, to grant the parcel map. I don't know if you have any more specific questions about what they presented, you know, some of this evidence about a subsequent, or a prior conservation subdivision, that's something that occurred a number of years ago, and any attacks on that, the statute limitations has run, and that's been recorded, I guess, for a number, a number of years. So we're really only dealing with this map here today. And as I understand it, from speaking with Mr. Bakker, and he can clarify, there, there is no access issues in, under this map with the division of the parcel into two smaller parcels.
Madam Chair, needless to say, I agree with everything that is going on with this.
Well, I thought I had much more power than I usually have.
That's right. Ignore the man in front of the curtain. Anyway, Madam Chair, members of the commission, you know, I concur with county council's comments. The only question I wanted to point, other question I wanted to point out, is there's, in, in the package that you received today, of course, it talks about the SD-07-006 subdivision, and as council pointed out, that subdivision is approved, recorded, and beyond any statute, so it's not before you today. The other issue is the issue of the Bun-Burrell access easement. And if you look at the timeline in which this project was ultimately approved, there's a large gap between the planning director hearing and the ultimate approval. Well, that was because the Bun-Burrells had submitted as part of their application an access easement that they thought was actually their driveway. And when it got to the county surveyor's office to be checked, it turned out it was an access easement for some other place. So then they went off on a search for the actual access easement for their own driveway. They found that access easement, and once they provided it, and it was confirmed by the county surveyor, that they had an access easement and it predated the, the planning director hearing, it was valid and the project could go forward. So that's why we're here today. So the, the access easement, there's no problem. It's been reviewed by the county surveyor.
Okay, before I close the public hearing, we have some exhibits to get into the record.
Yes, Madam Chair, my official duties as the quasi-person here. I'd like to submit into the record exhibits A through C and 14 through 17.
Thank you very much. So now I will close the public hearing, and we will deliberate. Anyone want to take the lead here?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm very cognizant of, of the effort that the appellant has put into it, but I'd like to, as county council is represented, there's a lot of entwined real property issues here that is very, very confusing to the layperson. And I appreciate county council and county staff for trying to keep clarity, but remember, what we're here for as a planning commission is to adjudicate whether or not to uphold the appeal of the planning director's decision or to deny it. And if we deny it, then we have to have a specific finding giving that denial, because again, the original decision was based on the Subdivision Map Act, which has been complied with. So therefore, properly, staff gave us the information of what we had to make a specific finding on. We, as a planning commission, are not here to adjudicate fee simple or other legal rights. That is not our purpose, nor does it carry any weight in the court. So even if we were, if the restrictive covenant is to go in place, that has not been adjudicated. It just simply exists for the benefit of the county per SEQA. So therefore, the county is the only one that can enforce the restrictive covenant, because they're the beneficiary, not anybody else. So whether or not this affects the other titles to other properties as far as fee simple interest or the impact or damages, all I can say at this point is, to give you the benefit, the question is not right. There's been no evidence that it does. So future road, down the road, those kind of questions, it's not right yet. It may or may not. The only question somebody may interpret in the future is whether or not the county properly received the benefit of this restrictive covenant. Restricted covenant is required by law, so here we are. So at this point in time, I would like to make a motion, unless there's other comments or questions, to adopt the staff's recommended actions on exhibit 17 as presented.
16.
16, I'm sorry, 16, as presented.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll give a second.
Before we vote, is there any discussion? Do you want to say anything?
You know, like, I, I agree with, with Mike that I just can't see anything in here that somehow not to the use, enjoyment, and valuation neighboring properties is impacted by this CCNR versus the covenant, so that's really all I have to say.
Do you have anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I don't have anything to say.
Okay, but this has been long and arduous for both of you, and I really have a lot of sympathy dealing with these very specific legal matters, there's vocabulary that are terms of art that can be very confusing. I understand what you're trying to do, and I think the county has done everything it can to make clear that, that the county's position is that your water rights are not impacted by this, but that this is to mitigate for possible impacts for the subdivision. So I think every I has been dotted and every T crossed, and it's regrettable that it takes this long, but I'm also comforted that we really do get a very thorough look and that we get to consider these things before wetlands are destroyed and we end up looking like someplace that we don't want to live. So with that being said, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is commission discussion, report by the planning director on board actions and other matters.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I interrupt a moment?
Sure.
Did we approve item five on the agenda, the minutes from September?
No, I skipped that. Let's go back to approval of September 29, 2011 minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Aye.
Okay, sorry about that, thanks for catching that. Okay.
I was awake.
Okay, thank you for having and accommodating our applicant on a late afternoon hearing. Very kind of you. What we have coming up on the 10th and the 17th are both probably very lengthy issues. So on the, on the 10th, we have an update on the Tolon Road landfill. That's going to be a verbal presentation given by staff, so that's going to include staff from the planning department, from the air pollution control district, and from the environmental health department that acts as the lead enforcement agency for the landfills in the county. I believe that the air commissioner staff will also have someone in the room for, available for questions as well, and the RSD is coming and will have a short presentation as well. So that is going to be second on the agenda to a zone change that you'll be hearing in the Malibu area, that is Crown Point Estate. So that will be first on the agenda, and the update for the Tolon will be after that. And then after that, we will be having a lunch for Commissioner Molitor. So, and then we have the item on November 17th as well. November 17th, we only have one item on the agenda, and that is a discussion on the possible revocation of a conditional use permit for a mining facility in the Ojai Valley. On as far as the board agenda is happening, your decision to approve the Barber Golf Course was then appealed to the board by the City of Moore Park. That is going to be heard by the board on November the 15th. Yes, and the board has the LCA that you approved unanimously on November 22nd, so that's going to be before them. And those are the only items as we have now on the agenda, and I'm not sure how, Dania, how far you are out, you have the planning commissioner's availability to. We were going to do the planning commissioner training in October, except the county staff all hands on deck for Excela right now, and so, you know, we are moving and transitioning from our permitting program, from permits plus into Excela automation. And so we are creating that system, we're testing that system, and it is an awful lot of work, so the staff is, is really busy doing that. So it looks like this training is going to happen probably in January, and we're going to coordinate that with all of the MAC members too, to see if we can get as many of them as possible in the room. So we did kind of take the poll before about things that you were interested in being trained on, and so we were going to have the Brown Act, we were going to have SEQA, we were going to talk about our ordinance in the planning commission handbook, and as it stands now, I know Commissioner Rodriguez asked for some, some representative from the Harbor District to kind of talk about harbor planning and how that works with the county planning, and so we've invited Lynn Krieger to attend, and we'll make sure that that happens in January. But if you have anything else that you are wanting specifically to be looked at, we were considering bringing things that we had already had prepared, that we had given in other locations before that are very interesting, like the county has a cultural heritage board, and so we can come back and do a quick five or 10-minute presentation about what, what that's all about, and anything else that you would like to be discussed during that time. So we're, we're getting ready to set that agenda, and so we'll have to, to look as the time gets closer to January, to look at everybody's availability for that date, because obviously we would like a full planning commission available for that. And so that's what I had, if you had anything for me.
We can vacate that tentative December 1st training date. I think I saw that someplace in email or something.
Was that a tentative date? I thought we had a tentative October date that we had already released from your calendar.
It was in the schedule of?
Oh, that is a, is that, no, that's a SMAR, that's a SMAR training. So that's the training, that's training that we're just going to have in this room for the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, where Mr. Bakker and Ebony McGee, who have come to the county in the last year to kind of run that program, are offering training, and the state Office of Mine Reclamation folks are going to be here as well, and that training is open to anybody from the public, but specifically, we're trying to get at mining operators and their engineers and developers for that business to, to really get them in tune with what the law says.
So it's not for us?
You're more than welcome to, to attend, but it's?
But it's not a hearing, it's not a hearing specifically for us?
It's not a hearing, it's a training session that we're doing in this room on that topic. So sorry about that confusion. It's the, SMAR is the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act.
Question though, are we, is the planning commission still the adjudicating body for that, for this county? Remember when we went through? I remember when we went through all of the mines, we were the entity that had, the board supervisor that selected. So I guess that's the big question, if we are still the panel that we sit as that body.
You do.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but it's going to be more of a techno, and obviously, you're willing, you're more than welcome to attend. It's going to be more of a technical for the mining operators and the people that submit their, they're called Merck forms for them, you know, their annual, here's how you need to submit it, here's the format that we need, here's the detail that we need, here's the markings that we need. And so we're going to try to march through not only the county ordinance, but the state law and the requirements, so we can make this a smoother transition. So it's intended for a certain audience.
So is there anything ironic about the Mosler Mine coming on the 17th and the training coming on the 1st?
The training has been in the works for about the last six months, and it's been scheduled for about four months out there. So we knew that was always going to be the date.
Is there any chance that he can partake of the training before his possible revocation is considered?
You know, our doors are always open to every mining operator, right?
Okay.
So we're always more than happy to sit down and talk to any of them, if any of them has specific questions on, on how to complete a reclamation plan. I mean, we have the benefit of having somebody on our staff that also sits on the State Mining and Reclamation Board, so, you know, we are available here to help any mining operator in the county.
Understood. Thank you. Anything else that the commission may wish to introduce? No? Then this meeting is adjourned.